I'm gonna let this go. Thank you. Oh, no, 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 no. We've got enough. We can do more later. Not everyone has to have anything while we're sitting here.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Things I have to do while I'm sitting here. Don't have a heart attack. Don't have a heart attack.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance. Tony, would you lead us in that? Mr. Pat Maugh, would you please lead us in prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you today for the opportunity to meet in a free country where we can have such meetings and open to the public. We ask that you guide hearts and the intents of the heart and the mind of each person participating and each one here listening as well, and that your wisdom would prevail in all things and the workings of the Spirit in our minds. Help us to think right and to do right for thy honor and glory, we ask you, Jesus.
Amen.
Well, unfortunately, Commissioner Mark has the flu that's been going around. It's really been ravaging our community, and we wish those all well that are going through this right now. That being said, Mr. Cardwell, assuming you've had a chance to look over the claims and the minutes from the previous meeting. Could I have a motion for approval?
I'd like a moment to approve this minute's claim.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. First on the agenda, David, that's pronounced Cole or Colley.
Colley.
Colley, would you please come forward? Morning, sir. Could you please state your business?
Yeah, my name's David Colley from Hardensburg. We had an issue with snow removal. We had to fix snow and ice, and we had to pay individuals to remove it from Roll Street because the county crew claimed they didn't have that too there.
Excuse me, what street is that?
Roll Street.
Roll?
Yep. It's between Lifeing and Right Street, right behind 330.
Okay.
We had to pay him two different times for two different snow removals that week because the snow was so bad my wife couldn't get out to go to work, and the woman who lives behind us is a veteran, and she couldn't get out to make the solar concrete point. So it needed to be done. I was basically looking for reimbursement because I was told that I needed to bring it to the commissioner's authority reimbursed. I was also wanting to know if there's any plans to get a smaller truck or plow or something in case it ever happens again. So let's take care of it.
Yeah, we've got a, it's basically a super cab pickup truck. That's the smallest thing we have other than the single axle dump trucks and the tans that we have. I guess there's a big tree in the way. It makes it difficult to drive around it. I asked Mr. Cardwell, when this first was brought to our attention, what you need to do is simply just get a bill from the contractor? Okay. Take a look at that and make sure that the person who carries it. Thank you.
I think I can shed a little light on this, if you'd allow me.
Yes, sir. Please.
I don't know how familiar you are with the layout of Hardensburg, but now this town, you may not be aware of talking about. Serious question. Here's a need to find an older subdivision. And if you look at the bottom of that, you'll see Swan Street shows up there. That's the general area we're talking about in town.
Yeah.
And then flip to your second page, and Roll Street will appear.
Yeah.
All right, now go to your next page. In that area, you'll see a little asterisk there highlighting the white box.
Right.
That's where we're talking. And the red line is where we plow. We don't just kind of leave that subdivision high and dry. We do make a loop through that subdivision.
Right.
Just try to open it up. And the issue with that street, I'll call it an alley, at the tree, the width of the road is seven and a half feet wide.
Wow.
Our plow, and it isn't pickup, it's not one of our pickup trucks, we pick Hardensburg, it's a pickup, it is eight foot six. So there's no real reason to play to get it down the street.
Is this, is this gravel or?
It is old pavement. There's a tree. You'll see the general shape of the street there on page one. Page two, that's coming in from the west side. You can't make that turn with a plow. And then the service line, the power line going into the house, you'll see hanging down in picture three.
Yeah.
So we can't get a backhoe down through there. Page four also shows the power line. And then the one tape measure, there's a seven inch rise in the asphalt where the roots of the maple tree are coming up through the street. And that's where the road measures seven foot two, which is your last picture. Now, the first thing you'll think is, well, why don't you fix all this? Here's the county. Well, that's the complicated part of the story. None of the roads in Hardensburg are our responsibility. We have never adopted a single road in Hardensburg because of the legal issues. Nobody is receiving funds. Everything we do in Hardensburg is just trying to be a good neighbor. You know, we're trying to help out until everything is resolved. I have a list of roads here, and that's a whole other story. It's been many, many years since the road in or in Hardensburg has been updated. I don't know the legal stats, but if and when the county adopts the roads in Hardensburg, many of them should be overlooked. We cannot adopt them. This is a good example of why. Just like the city of Salem, they have a different operation than what the county does. We have almost 800 miles of road to plow, and we can't be working in alleys, picking up trash, things like that. It's just cities and counties are set up different. Page one here, this is what the state inventory shows. And if you'll compare that to pages two and three, those are the roads I would recommend down the line, whatever comes to that, to adopt and not adopt. Many of those names don't match. I'll give you a few examples. First Street is actually Hardensburg, I don't know the road. Third Cross Street is actually Maple Street. The road in question, this alley in question that we call Roll Street, is actually Moore Street, if you call the state. So over 50 years, when somebody decides to change the street name at a town board meeting, it wasn't followed up with. So the inventory process is going to be an exhausting. And I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of hard feelings when like this gentleman finds out we don't want his street. And there's gonna be many more like it.
I have a comment about that. Roll Street and several of the other surrounding area, as from what we know, the 911 dispatch is the reason viable streets are named what they are because that's what they're referred to via 911 law. So if someone was to call for emergency, that's the street name you give them because that's what is listed as through the county. So.
Right. On GIS mapping, like what they're called, that does match, like he says, with 911 GIS mapping does match. The state inventory is sort of, the state doesn't care what we call them, but you know, they're gonna pay us for what we send to them.
Correct.
When we adopt these, it's quite a process to try and figure out. Some of them you just have to measure. You just have to measure it and guess that that's the right street. So I don't, I don't know what the correct answer is. We're not receiving funds, so to buy another, we've already basically bought a pickup just to do subdivisions, and we sent it to Hardensburg. We've got a truck that goes just to do the small streets in Hardensburg. And I called the state, or I sent an email to the state to see where the local road and street and the NGA's funds are going. And as of April, our last, or within Hardensburg last to see, April of '24, now the funds are just being dispersed throughout the state. Nobody is receiving funds for those roads. And roughly $13,500, you know, it fluctuates a little, but that's roughly what's been left on paper. So at some point, we'll either need to adopt, or I don't know how realistic is for Hardensburg. You know, the rumor is Hardensburg is gonna take itself back over, but at some point, we're gonna have to make the call. I know that's in a legal battle perhaps, so I can't follow along.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's in the, it's turned over to the insurance companies, attorneys, and it's not progressing as quickly as we'd like. We'd like to get this resolved. How long, let's just say for the sake of conversation, how long would it take to go through the process with end doc if we just decided to adopt the street names in Hardensburg so they're on the inventory list? How long does that process take?
Roughly a year.
A year, give or? Does it ever happen in six months?
They do their process of adoption once a year.
I got a question, Dave. Was that street taken care of prior to Hardensburg being
Yes, it was, but the town council was actually there. I actually have a paper that I handed both of you off on page three of it. It states how many times there have been large trucks on that road in the past five years, everything, fire trucks, the dump trucks, that have managed to get up and down that road. Including the U-Haul that I drove when we moved over there, it was the largest single axle U-Haul you could rent without having a C D on it. And I managed to make it all the way down that road with that tree there.
I don't think he's arguing the fact that something like that can't be done. And he's just saying that the snow plow is actually larger.
Did you mention in the middle of the interview?
Making turns in, I would now look at myself and do, he's fixing that line that's hanging over the street by all means checking for them.
I understand. On that list, I also listed the dates or the months that were plowed by the town with a drop truck, with a pickup truck with a plow on it. And at one point, it was actually plowed with a bobcat. So it can be done. It's just a matter of looking at it. So when the pound was town, we didn't have an issue with it.
I will not send a plow down that until that tree, the stuff's gone. I do promise you that.
My question about that is, if that's the issue is the tree, is there anything that can be done to the homeowner or against the homeowner to get them to remove it? Or can the city, the county, whatever you wanna call it? Because as far as I know, that home was owned by an investment group out in Florida, and they have multiple lawsuits in Indiana against them for different programs. So even if you filed something, did you actually get taken care of?
At this point, you know, it's not our tree that we can take out. We don't have a right of way. We've not adopted the roads, therefore, we haven't adopted the right of way of the road.
I understand. I understand where you're coming from. I'm just saying, when Hardensburg was Hardensburg and incorporated town, we didn't have this issue. So.
And just so everyone understands, like a bobcat or a backhoe, when we plow snow, each employee has a truck and a plow route. You think, well, why don't you just take your bobcat or your backhoe? There's nobody to do it. When we plow snow, each man has an eight, 10 hour route. There's just nobody left to do that kind of stuff. And that's where, my recommendation would be not to adopt any of those subdivision streets there. There's a few more, like Bearcat, and there's gonna be some hard feelings there, but it's just gonna bring up more issues like this, you know? It's not that we're abandoning because we're not equipped to deal with that.
And as far as Bearcat goes, I know there was a lawsuit several years ago against one of the property owners over there that was here in Washington County, in Salem. So that they could take property away from him in order to expand Bearcat just before Hardensburg was adopted. So what was the point of spending taxpayer money to do that to a property owner if you were gonna turn around and abandon your road? That made no sense to me.
A lot of things still make a lot of sense. I don't wanna put you off, and I wanna see that if it's possible, if it's legal, and if we can do it, we would consider reimbursing you, obviously, but right now, due to the fact that it's not recognized as a county road, we're gonna, we're gonna have to talk about this amongst yourselves, Mr. Cardwell and Mr. Marshall, and try to come up with a fair solution. Because I certainly understand, to me, the biggest issue, it would simplify things tremendously, that tree was gone. And we'll try to find out who owns the property, and I guess all we can do is ask them to remove the tree because it's basically growing into the alley.
And in order to be the simplest solution, be put Hardensburg by Hardensburg, and that do what you did by dissolving.
That's not our decision. That's a decision of a judge, not ours.
If you all voted to dissolve it, you should be able to do what you did.
It's not the way the law works. We're not gonna get into that conversation right now, sir. So we'll take this under advisement, and we'll try to come up with solutions so you can get in and out of this alley. We don't wanna see your alley blocked with all the snow circling.
Well, the biggest issue with that was just us. I mean, it doesn't just affect me and my wife. It also affects her neighbors because their garage.
I understand.
They'll be in effect with the biggest factor is I wanted to make sure that they could get in and out.
I understand. I understand.
So if the, if the county doesn't adopt that and it's abandoned, are there any steps we can go through in order to take care of that road or get repaved or anything else? Any other direction through the state? Or is it just gonna be abandoned and just basically turned into a dirt patch?
Unfortunately, not to this doggone lawsuit settled.
Well, the issue justice, give in, turn town like when it's down to hear of that as it did for 100 years.
We can't do, we couldn't do that if we wanted to because it's in the hands of the attorney. I'm sorry. We can't. It would be illegal for us to do that because it's under litigation.
I, a layman would come to all that. I just don't understand why it can't be just reversed instead of going through all the litigations. I know if you're dealing with a car accident or something like that, you can settle outside of court by just talking with other people at the council and getting done. So.
It's, it's the law.
All right, well, hopefully you all will find our favor and reimburse us if not, then I wouldn't do about that. I complained about that tree because even with fire, the fire EMS that's down that road, they may have the same issues to where they say, oh, well, we can't get through, or we can't get one way or the other down that road. So as I pointed out in that paper, there's been multiple happens, there's been large trucks, including fire trucks. So I know they can get them through there. It's just a matter of opinion on whether or not they will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
All right, First Partnership Director Andrew Cannon, would you like to forward and update us on what you've got?
So we have, good morning. We have been working on the ready project for the county, so the county 4H building. And we are working through just kind of that process with the RDA and rubber kills and the paperwork that they need. So what we know with the ready 2.0 project right now is that they're not gonna start paying county funds for that grant money until they reach a certain percentage of what they paid out for the ready one funds. But they have still started that process of doing the paperwork that they're gonna forward on to the state. So the IEDC is just gonna release that money. So what they've requested from us is kind of a spreadsheet that would be a timeline of when construction would begin, and also an allocation of the dollars. And of course, with the ready grants, that is a match. And so we have to show how we're matching those funds and then how we would be using those ready funds. So we are in the process right now of just kind of getting that timeline together of when we would procure an architect, when we would procure a contractor to do the construction, and then the construction process. And kind of give them a rough estimate of how the monies would be paid out once we start this project. We know that based on where we are with the ready funding that it is unlikely that any money would be allocated or distributed before, probably this summer, we're talking maybe June 1st. With this particular project and at replacing one of the old buildings at the fairgrounds to make way for a new one, we would start that process after, in terms of construction, demolition, demolition of the old building or the existing building, and then construction of the new building would start, you know, after fair. So in my timeline, kind of what I'm foreseeing is that we have a directive by the RDA that we have to have all these documents in by Thursday of this week. So I'm trying to get those finalized now so that we can send those in. They will then send that to the IEDC and make sure that there's no questions from them before we begin this process. So what I'm estimating is that roughly around that May timeframe, we will be able to start procurement of an architect. Then we will start procurement of a contractor. That way, we are well positioned to potentially start that demolition and construction roughly in August. So that's kind of how I'm seeing that timeline flow. And again, just trying to get all this information together so that we can get that to the IEDC this week. So that's kind of where we are right now with the ready project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
I know I'm tired of working hard on this and everything, but it's been brought to my attention, has this ever been brought up to be passed, to be continued on as you are doing? I mean, shouldn't this been approved prior to getting this far with?
What do you mean by approval?
Well, I mean, as far as I know, there's never been approval to continue this project. I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I knew this.
So on the ready projects, kind of how that works is, so the first round of ready was actually federal money that the federal government gave the states, and the governor had decided to allocate those funds to do projects, kind of primarily quality of place type of projects in communities. And so we are in a five county region. We are in the, our southern Indiana region. So that's Washington, Scott, Jefferson, Lloyd, and Clark County. And there are several regions throughout our state. And so the first round of ready funding, again, was special money. Washington County didn't see a lot, but what they did when they were deciding how to allocate that was everybody, when I say everybody, anybody could have submitted an application for a project that they wanted to take on within a county. So it could have been governments, city or county government, and independent contractors as well. And so we, you know, got through ready one. The state saw, like, this was great. It was a good thing for the state. And so the governor then allocated state funding to do a ready 2.0. And so it was September of '23. That was kind of that call, first call for applications. And so everybody, again, county, city government, independent contractors that had particular projects they wanted to work on. It could have been infrastructure projects, housing, childcare, like we've heard, a variety of different initiatives that would improve the quality of place in a community. And so everybody kind of submitted that initial draft. They were reviewed, then in, I believe in this event, us in February. It was kind of a process where they went to each of the five counties. And when I say they, it was the RDA board. So they went to each of the five counties. They kind of heard presentations. And so anybody that had submitted a potential project for Washington County, for example, had a chance in here to do a presentation, kind of talked to them about the project, what they were proposing. We had some from the museum, historical society. There was a number of different projects that were proposed around the county. Then they did a site tour, going to see different locations in the county. After that, then in June, July timeframe, we were asked for anybody who submitted a project, more in-depth applications, so additional details, so forth. They took that, and this board reviewed all of these applications, and they scored them. And so it really wasn't up for us as county government, us as city government, or anybody else. It was really about applying to them and that board deciding what projects they deemed. And so I know the county had several projects they submitted. The city had several projects. Unfortunately, the cities did not get any approved this time. County did get this one approved. But we had an independent contractor who had two housing projects that did get approved by the RDA. We had a third independent contractor who worked on multifamily. Mason Manor doing improvements, but then adding new units as well. That one got approved, the YMCA, and then the county. I might be leaving somebody out, but I don't think I am. But we primarily had housing, which was kind of, the IEDC had kind of said, this is what we're most in favor of, was housing, childcare, that sort of initiative. So anyway, they had scored those. And it was really that board who came back and said, here are the projects out of everything that we've read, everything that we've reviewed. Here's the projects from this county that we feel should move forward and this county and that county. So then they gave us that. A couple of months passed, and they came back and said, okay, here's what we believe we're gonna allocate towards your projects. But still, the IEDC, because they're the ones issuing the money, they have to get that final blessing. And so that's where we are right now. We're putting together this last bit of information to send them so that they can see our timelines, how we're gonna use the state money, and then give us the okay to start a particular project and then we'll be able to be reimbursed by them. But that's kind of how the approval process went.
Right. Approval with the grant part of it. I guess you're talking about that now in my dedication, how that works. But I'm talking about us as a government entity. How does that work? Do, is this gonna be brought up as a commission meeting in the future?
This started two years ago, actually, and the project itself has been talked about for five or six years.
In a, in a meeting, that's why I'm getting it. I don't know. I'm not ready for all that, so.
Yeah, those decisions were, those were made a year, a couple of years ago. Submitting projects, valuable projects for the county. Everybody had an opportunity to present projects. And we submitted, I think. Everybody had an opportunity to present projects and, uh, we, we submitted, I think, three or four, well, four altogether. We submitted the highway department project. They, they didn't like the smell of that because, uh, it was a government building. So, um, we applied for a grant to help, uh, replace sidewalks around the courthouse. We applied for a grant for, uh, over the fairgrounds of demolishing the pool and make that a parking area because we have parking issues up there when we have events at the fairgrounds. And then we applied for rebuilding the four H building at the fairgrounds. So we had, we had four and that was, this process started a couple of years ago.
I, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, as as a governmental body, has this project been approved through that yet? And what's the process for us to approve that?
It's already been approved because we applied for the grant.
So we, we, we as a governmental body don't say, okay, um, this or this?
We, we already decided, these are the projects we picked and we moved forward, submitted the, uh, applications. This was like I said, done a year or two ago. It's already been done, already been taken care of and hopefully some good will come out of it. Because, uh, it's, this project is especially, uh, good for our youth, uh, and the extension of office for acres.
I'm just trying to educate myself along with the public here on how.
How, I guess, how.
That's fine.
What's the proper status?
And to this point, I know, I know the commissioners submitted initially several projects, the city submitted several projects. Unfortunately, the deciding body on what projects move forward didn't necessarily like all of them. I know a couple of the water districts applied for some money to, um, support the infrastructure and to do enhancements. And unfortunately, you know, things like that did not get selected, just like the courthouse. Fixing the steps up here that were sloping in the sidewalk, um, you know, did not, did not make their cut. So it's unfortunate, but I, I do know that the commissioners, I believe, had a handful of projects that they did request and this was the only one that, that made the cut.
Okay. Any other questions?
I would like to.
Angie, thank you, appreciate all your hard work and a lot of hoops to jump through and we appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, Pamela Lockhart, um, she's probably not here because I spoke with her Friday. There was some issues at the Hartsburg Senior Center where we're responsible for that as a county now. Um, I believe she had a water software that needed removed because this was inoperable. She said she didn't even want it in there and then also, uh, a door that needed repaired. So that stays here. Uh, we'll move on to the, uh, interlocal cooperative agreement or riverboat revenue.
All right. Commissioners, this is an annual interlocal agreement between Harrison County and Washington County. For Washington County to receive some of the riverboat revenue from Harrison County. Like I said, it's an annual agreement, the Harrison County Council determines the amount of the funds. Washington County will just need to approve this, their local agreement for the, um, distribution from Harrison County.
Yeah, um, if I may, for those of you who are not familiar, uh, the, uh, I call it the gambling boat. The riverboat revenue that's taken in from Harrison County, um, they do not legally have to give us this money. They do it because they understand that a lot of their business comes from Washington County residents, good, bad or otherwise. And this, this money is used, uh, um, for various things throughout the year. This is an annual thing, we just, it's just a formality, we sign this every year. And, uh, this time I asked for a motion to continue on with the receiving of riverboat revenue shared from Harrison County.
Make that a motion.
All right, Mr. Cardwell made the motion, I'll second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to add something to that, I think we ought to get, at least send them a card or a plaque or something and appreciate it that, uh, what they do for it.
Yeah. Only required signatures, president of the commissioners, Mr. Marshall was obviously absent today. Okay. Yes, uh, Rhonda Green, would you please come forward?
Yes, thank you. Sorry for the creeping, my knees are an adventure. All right, so I'm here to talk about the zoning board and the new ordinance. And, uh, what I would like to do is I, uh, I was at the meeting that was called at, uh, in response to this last week. And, uh, a lot of people wanted to express that maybe we should close down the, the zoning board. So I'm just going to go ahead and read this, okay? And then we can go ahead and talk about it afterwards. And it was written with, with Phil in mind being, okay? But I'm still going to read it as is. I'm asking you today to dissolve the illegal Washington County zoning board and BZA. Twelve counties in Indiana don't have zoning. Five of those twelve counties dissolved their zoning boards within the last few years because of the same overreach we have here in Washington County. I would like the county commissioners to, to vote to dissolve the Washington County planning and zoning board, just like those other, five other Indiana counties have done. I would also like the county commissioners to retain the comprehensive plan as an advisory document so that this county will still be eligible for grants in the future. Also, after this board is dissolved, I would like the commissioners to pass a pornography shop location ordinance. I know this is a great concern to many in our community and can be better addressed without zoning. Because in zoning, you are required by law to have at least one location in the county where this type of business is permitted. You have known for years that this zoning board and BZA have been illegal and have still used tax dollars to fund it. The county commissioners have been using county tax money to pay two attorney's fees to break state laws specifically when they appointed Commissioner Todd Ewing to the BZA, contrary to state law and allowing him to serve in a hearing. That hearing was not legal and was not redone. For the past several years, this board has had more than three Republican citizen members and members that neither own property nor reside within the jurisdiction of the board, which is contrary to state law and the commissioners, put the commissioners full knowledge. This board and this county commissioners have so little respect for state laws that they have knowingly taken our rights away for use. This zoning document is not the legal document that was sent through the public hearings. We have tried to get a copy of the legal document that tax money has been spent on through open records requests and have been denied by the board lawyer. This board is uncontrollable. Years of openly, lethally breaking state law lays the groundwork for any decision to be overturned. Failure to follow all legal procedures in accordance with the state law is grounds for decisions to be overturned. This opens the county up for a sue fest. As proven in the past, someone, anyone who can afford a lawyer beats the county like a tom-tom drum in court. The reason that everyone is upset is because it looks like the county is using tax dollars to wage war on the poor. This needs to stop today. And Phil, if you're listening, you are the only commissioner that can do that. This is your legacy, your legacy, please pick a side. But before you take a vote or not vote or just show absolute disdain for the will of the people, let me show you the foundation that I have laid for this situation because I knew this was going to happen. Max and I made sure that all our federal, state and local government officials were notified of this illegal board's activities before the election. This proves that there was no relief of any of our public officials who were supposed to protect and serve our community. Now you know that I'm a little bit jaded about this, but let me tell you why I think that happened. These Republican candidates needed your support to get into office. But now that they are in office, we are going to find out how tolerant they are of this embarrassing nonsense that has literally endangered everyone in this county. I have six hundred and fifty-three signatures on an online petition to dissolve this illegal county zoning board. I don't know yet how many signatures have, I have on real pen and paper sheets that are out there. Please don't ignore this cry of surprise, anger and fear from our community. You are the swing vote, Phil. Wherever you are, it is on you to do the Christian thing and end the county's war on the poor by dissolving this illegal planning and zoning board and BZA, just like the five, those five of twelve Indiana counties. Now I've given you a copy of this, because I'm not real sure you're going to let me talk. Uh, I also have Max's, like, uh, rundown of all the legalities and the codes and all that kind of stuff, plus an Indiana map on the back here that shows the ones that don't have zoning. And then here's the, uh, paper from the lawyer, Lisa Fleming of the board saying, we just, it's just too hard to follow the law. Okay? So I've gotten all of that and I've got the, the copy of the six hundred and fifty-three things. I'm not really going to leave these here because I don't want there to be any retaliation or anybody, you know, but this is an outcry from the community and I hope that you don't ignore it. Do you have any questions, Tom?
No, I don't, thank you.
Any questions? So please, please dissolve it.
At least make it legal. Thank you. It is legal.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
I suggest you get an attorney.
No, it's not.
Because it hits.
No, it's not.
Not going to give you.
No, it's not.
I read Indiana code, it is not.
I like my rights, my own property.
All right.
So I can make a motion here or whatnot, but it would, so.
Well, go ahead and make the motion.
I'll make the motion to, uh, dissolve the zoning board, it's all legal and everything.
Go ahead and say what you're going to say, Todd. Please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. There's no second motion dies, thank you.
How about the people made the second motion? How about the decisions, the county made the second motion?
Don't want you to sleep, sir.
Um, sure is. We, the people, have the right to speak, we have the right to vote. What are you saying, as office of commission?
We have other business.
It's okay, remember I'm a office.
Eight years.
Three years is too long.
The redevelopment commission.
That's, that's why they expect its course at this point and I don't think it's going to pass anyway, so. That's why they expect its course. I think Phil made a, a, a public statement yesterday on the radio that he thought between Todd and he, between Todd and I, let's just, you just settle down and see what happens for the second community before it gets, uh, too outrageous and somebody gets hurt or whatnot. And I'm, I'm not in agreement with all that, so let's keep a peaceful mind and a soft hand, uh, from this point forward. And, uh, just do due diligence, due diligence to convince the zoning board and Mr. Ewing here that, uh, we do not need this and it's, uh, overreached, so. There is some good points in zoning by all shapes and forms. I think we need a little bit of it to, uh, and this and that and that. But that's my viewpoint and, you know, at this point, so. Keep calm and, and just keep your due diligence here.
Tony, I don't think it would be an issue if there was more of a definition.
Excuse me.
The vagueness is what issues.
We're going to continue on with the meeting, we're not having a debate on the legitimacy of our plan commission board. Thank you. Moving on to the redevelopment commission appointment. It's been recommended by the redevelopment commission board, which consists of Tom Parris, myself, Ryan Watson and Robert Strange. Our attorney is Mr. Tom Cypress. And they have recommended the representative from the Washington County School Board, the designate will be Rebecca White. And I'll entertain a motion in that regard at this time.
Redevelopment commission, what, explain that to everybody here.
The redevelopment commission is an area that oversees an area of property within jurisdictions of cities, any municipality, parts of the county where they create a TIF board. And that is a means by which, that's designed for economic development where the funds collected from property taxes. This gentleman that's getting up, leading right now, Mr. Gamble, he lives in the TIF district. Uh, I live in the TIF district. There are two TIF districts that, uh, we have, one is around the airport and one is out east of town. And these funds are used to fund projects for economic development, infrastructure for roads. The industrial park out here is one we're working on now and getting a water sewer, uh, extended out toward Beeline Road is one of the projects. So that's what that money is used for. There are five members of the board and there is one voting member that the Samuel Community School Corporation, uh, provides to the board. And their nominee is Rebecca White. And that's the reason for the appointment.
All right, Rebecca, I'm assuming that's about it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to, uh, appoint Harrison.
Okay, been a motion made by Mr. Cardwell to appoint Rebecca White on the redevelopment commission board. And I'll second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Boils, do you have anything in addition? Okay, thank you. Anything else? Tyler? Mr. Cardwell, do you have anything else, sir?
I don't blame you, I saw what you can just tell in the community, just keep, keep your head cool and, so.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that a motion.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.